Stay your name for the record and proceed.
Good afternoon, President Clark and members of City Council. My name is Jessica Shapiro and I am Acting Commissioner of the Department of Human Services. With me today is Kimberly R. Lee, Chief Implementation Officer for Improving Outcomes for Children, and Marcia Dixon, Director of DHS Budget and Finance, as well as other members of my leadership team. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. DHS's FY '17 General Grants Revenue Budget Request is for $671,178,546. This is $2,577,307 below the FY '16 estimated obligation level of $673,755,853. DHS's general fund budget request is $103,219,500. I would like to take the opportunity to update you on our progress with our system-wide transformation called Improving Outcomes for Children, otherwise known as IOC. Additionally, I would like to share with you some of the successful outcomes we are seeing, as well as some of the challenges we are currently facing. Finally, I will outline some of the plans we have as we continue our journey towards reform of Philadelphia's child welfare system. As you are aware, IOC is based on the principle that a community neighborhood approach to the delivery of child welfare services will positively impact safety, permanency, and well-being of the children and families involved with DHS. We deliver those services in the neighborhood through community umbrella agencies, or CUAs. We began to transfer cases to CUAs in January of 2013. As of March 31, 2016, almost 5,000 families and over 9,000 children are receiving services from CUAs. Approximately 1,000 families are still receiving services directly through DHS and other private providers. Approximately 200 of these families will transfer over to the CUAs during the summer of 2016, and the remaining 800 families, many of whom are close to reaching permanency, will remain with DHS until their case closes or the children reach permanency. The primary goal of IOC is to enable children to stay with their own families. However, when children need to be removed from their families due to safety reasons, we always try to first place them with extended family or kin. I am pleased to say, for the first time, our data is showing that we are placing children with kin more frequently than in non-relative family settings. We continue to make every effort to increase the number of children placed with kin. As of March 31, 2016, 43 percent of children in placement were in kinship care as opposed to 40 percent in non-relative foster care. This is a dramatic improvement since the year before IOC began. In March 31, 2012, 31.6 percent of children were placed in kinship care. The CUAs have seen tremendous success with community outreach and engagement. They have sponsored hundreds of parenting cafes where parents and caregivers have the opportunity to exchange information and support each other in terms of addressing the challenges of parenting. Additionally, the CUAs have sponsored activities and opportunities such as community fairs, Father's Day dinners, a community clothing and resource closet, family fun nights, a diaper bank, regular game nights, and teen workshops. The CUAs have also been successful at hiring staff from the neighborhoods they serve. For example, Wordsworth CUA 5, which is located in the 35th and 39th Police Districts, has 27 percent of their staff who live in the CUA 5 catchment area. Other CUAs are experiencing similar successes. Because we value diversity, we are working to ensure that our contractors, their spending, their boards, and their staff reflect the demographic of the children and families that we serve. During FY '16, we have been working diligently to increase minority participation in contracts. We have sponsored several networking opportunities for CUAs to meet with minority women and disabled vendors. It is our hope that these opportunities will increase spending in this area. DHS has also made significant progress in reducing the number and percentage of children placed in congregate care settings. Our goal is to only use congregate care when absolutely necessary and primarily for treatment purposes. Since FY '13, the percentage of youth in congregate care, both group home and institution settings, has decreased from approximately 22.3 percent to approximately 14.6 percent as of March 31, 2016. One of the core components of the IOC transformation is to ensure families given a voice in their child welfare case. This is accomplished through family team conferencing. These conferences are held throughout the life of a case at key decision-making points. Families are encouraged to attend these conferences with their support system. Social service professionals from various disciplines such as behavioral health, education, and physical health also attend the conferences when appropriate. The majority of these conferences have been held in the community in places such as faith-based locations, recreation centers, libraries, community rooms, and supermarkets, and other community-based organizations. While IOC is seeing early successes, we are keenly focusing on ways to continue to improve the practice at the CUAs through the provision of technical assistance and enhanced monitoring. During FY '17, DHS intends to expand and enhance our capacity to rigorously monitor and evaluate the performance of the CUAs and the placement subcontractors. In July of 2016, we will begin using a revised CUA comprehensive case file review tool, which will be used by DHS staff to assess and evaluate the performance of the CUAs. This revised tool will allow us to measure the quality of the services and help us determine the ability of the CUAs to achieve the goals of IOC. The tool will also help us with delivering appropriate and effective technical assistance in all areas of practice. I'm also proud to say we have expanded our presence in and support for the community and our education system by increasing our collaboration with the School District of Philadelphia. There are currently 15 education liaisons in 20 school district of Philadelphia schools who are assigned to work with the CUAs in their regions. This staff, which is situated in schools with high concentration of DHS-involved youth, is responsible for helping to remove educational barriers for children involved with DHS. They also assist school staff with connecting to the assigned DHS and CUA teams, as well as connecting children who are not DHS-involved with various social services. As you are aware, DHS continues to operate the Child Abuse Hotline, which operates 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We are also responsible for investigating reports of child abuse and neglect. We continue to see experience arise in the number of calls to our hotline and a similar rise in the number of investigations. Specifically, hotline reports are up 30 percent when comparing the first three quarters of fiscal year 215 with fiscal year 2016. The total number of investigations for these same time periods is also up 12 percent. We believe this increase in volume is primarily due to a sweeping overhaul of child welfare laws after the Jerry Sandusky case, which ultimately resulted in 27 new laws effective in January of 2015. Some of the major changes in the law expanded the definition of child abuse, expanded who can be labeled a perpetrator, increased the number of mandated reporters, and increased the penalties for mandated reporters who failed to report abuse. At the time of budget testimony last year in April of 215, we had approximately 5,400 children in out-of-home placement. This year, as of March 31, 2016, approximately 6,100 children were in out-of-home placement, which is a 13 percent increase. Similarly, we have seen a rise in the number of families receiving in-home services. As of March 31, 2015, approximately 1,800 families were receiving in-home services compared to 2,000 as of March 31, 2016, which is an 11 percent increase. All children who are placed in out-of-home care deserve to achieve timely reunification or other permanents, including adoption or permanent legal custodianship. I am pleased to say the number of system-wide permanencies has begun to increase after a decline in 2015. From July 15 to March 216, 1,274 children achieved permanency, reflecting a 25 percent increase over the same time period from FY '15. The number of adoptions has increased 15 percent and the number of reunifications increased 30 percent. We are continuing to work urgently to return children safely to their parents, and when they cannot return, we are seeking adoption and permanent legal custody. However, while the number of permanencies increased, the number of children in out-of-home placement has also increased due to increased number of children entering the system. We believe that this is likely due to the increase in the number of reports to the hotline. One of the ways we are working to decrease the number of children coming into placement and to in-home services is to ensure prevention services are designed to maintain children and youth safely in their own homes. We are in the process of realigning these services to provide social work staff with additional tools to divert families from the formal child welfare system. In closing, we have made serious strides towards reforming our system. We will continue to work aggressively and collaboratively with our staff and the CUA community to ensure child-focused and family-centered services are delivered to the children and families of Philadelphia. Thank you very much for your consideration. My staff and I are available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Almost every member here wants to ask questions. Let me just ask one.
Sure.
Page two of the testimony, if we're doing our math right, shows there are 308 vacancies in your department, as of January, anyway, of this year. Sounds like a lot. Could you comment on that?
Absolutely. So, we do carry some vacancies, and we are in the process of slowly trying to hire to fill those vacancies. One of the things that we are doing, we actually have a new class of social workers starting in May, as well as a new class of youth detention counselors that are starting in May. Additionally, as we've transferred our staff to new positions as a result of IOC, we are moving social workers who were formerly providing ongoing services in to fill some of the vacancies that we have in the hotline and the monitoring areas.
Do you have any idea how much you've cut that number down by now, or has there been much cut? I know it's not been that long, but, you know.
Absolutely. So, our staff prior to, from FY '10 to now, we have lost 132 staff.
Hired 132?
Oh, hired. How many people have we hired, or how many people have we decreased?
Yeah, that's because there were 308 vacancies. I'm just trying to figure out how.
Yeah, so, no, we have not hired enough staff to fill all those vacancies. So, like, 30 new staff are starting in May. So, we have not hired enough staff.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and congratulations on your appointment.
Thank you, Councilman.
You are not new, in the sense you have come up through the ranks, which has tested you by fire. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
We've had a number of interactions over the years, and I usually start my testimony with, that's the hardest job I could never do, and I appreciate the work you guys do for our community in ways that only you could do. So, having said that, last year, I asked about the CUA experiment. The CUA experiment, I call it, because it originated with the death of Daniel Patterson, and it was supposed to be, as I understand, a temporary fix to try to put together an advisory group to kind of better manage, almost in a private sector way, of what was going on in the lives of our children and youth. Last year, I asked you, well, how is that experiment going, and what are the tangible measurements that we could be judged by? And the response, not by you, but the predecessor, was that it was too early to know, we need to give it a little more time to see what those deliverables are. Are you prepared today to give it a grade?
I am prepared to tell you that we are seeing early successes. I am here to say that we have a lot of challenges still ahead, and I think I testify to the fact that our placement population has continued to grow. Our number of in-home families has continued to grow of services that we're providing on the formal child welfare system. So, in that respect, I think there's a lot more to do. I think we need to, the primary goal of IOC is to keep children at home with their families and in their own communities. And while we have been able to see an increase in the number of children placed with kin, we need to do better in terms of keeping children out of the system. So, we, research has said that it takes five to seven years to really see the outcomes. We are finally just, we are a few hundred, about 100 cases left to transfer over to the CUAs, and so we are finally reaching the point where the CUAs will be up for the whole fiscal year of '17, where we will not be in the dual system. So, I understand that this has taken a long time, and it feels like it's taken a long time, and I think that the model will work. It just is going to take time to show the results, and at the same time, we need to figure out a way to slow the growth.
So, again, I'm gonna repeat that, nobody could do your job like you do, and I appreciate what you do sincerely. But the urgency of now is that those young people don't have 20 years to figure out what should be done for them. They are suffering now, and they pop up in every bad outcome in our social justice, social service models. So, the question becomes, in your early indications, are we doing better under this system than we did under the old system? And if so, show me the categories of where we are improving, show me the categories where we are not improving, and then the game plan for moving the needle in the right direction.
Absolutely. So, I think we are involving families more in the process under the old system. Families did not have a voice at the table. Oftentimes, planning was done without them. I think that families were confused with the rules between the private provider and the city staff. So, the fact that we're bringing folks to the table, and they can bring their support system to the table and participate and receive services in their community is an excellent thing. So, I think in that respect, by giving families a voice in the process, we're doing extremely well. I think the fact that we have increased the percentage of children who live with family to minimize the trauma of being removed from their biological family is outstanding. So, for the first time, we are higher in kinship care than we are in non-relative foster care. About 44 percent of the children that are in non-relative foster care are placed within 10 miles of their home, so we're keeping kids in Philadelphia. We have decreased our percentage of children that are in congregate care, so we are very focused on making sure that we plan appropriately for older youth and that we are bringing kids outside of congregate care, and we are looking for family before we use congregate care. So, we used to be at 22.3 percent of our population was in congregate care, and now we're down to 14.5, and the national average is 13, so we've made a lot of progress in that respect. I'd like to be able to reduce the number of children that go into placement. So, one of the things that I've started since I've become Commissioner is to try to take a look at our prevention services.
Commissioner, could you speak a little closer?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a look at our prevention services to make sure that they are aligned to our mission of preventing kids from entering the child welfare system, so we'll be making some changes to our array of services. We're also receiving significant technical assistance from Casey Family Programs and our partners at the state to take a look, to pause and say, did we create, did we have processes or procedures that were moving kids over to the formal child welfare system unintentionally? So, we're pausing, we're taking a look back and looking and make sure that we're true to our hotline tools, that we've made some changes to when we send cases over to the CUAs to see if we can extend the assessment process for investigators, to see if we can divert more families from the system. We have invested a significant amount of money from the state to achieve permanency for young people, so we had a decline in FY '15 that was not acceptable, and so we are turning that decline around. So, we are on trajectory to meet our goals of getting more kids to permanency. So, we finally reached the place where we're slowing down our except-for services over the past few months, and we're closing more cases safely. So, I think we are starting to turn the corner in shrinking the system. We have put out an RFP that's currently out right now, so that we can take a look at IOC and just say, are we, have we made the right decisions? Are there things that need to be tweaked?
That's for me, not you.
That's for you, okay. When we began IOC, the system looked different. We were at 4,100 kids, and now we're at 6,100, and there was all this new legislation and all these new reports, and so as we were transforming the system, the landscape was changing, and so we need to be able to adjust to that and make changes.
So, let me be more succinct.
Yes.
Are more kids graduating now than before that are wards of our care? Yes, no?
So, I don't have that information on graduate rates, so I can get back to you on that.
Are more kids aging out of the system without placement now or than before?
So, I know last year, 235 youth aged out of the system without a permanency, although I think we're about a little over 300 aged out with a permanency, and we're doing a lot of work to make sure that our older youth have permanency.
More or less?
So, I'd have to go look at the numbers over time.
Are more or less kids becoming a part of the justice system than before than now?
So, arrests are down, I believe, and I know that our juvenile justice population is down. I could look at the data and show you the trend over time. I don't have those figures at the top of my, but we are, Youth Studies Center population, the average is about 94.
I'm talking about kids that don't necessarily wind up in the system as juveniles, but wind up in the system later in life as a result of, and so, so those are the measurements that I care about.
Understood.
All right. So, I'm gonna need, God willing, you will be able to provide that to the President now and call it a chair. So, we did a whole hearing on some of those measures. The number of foster care parents in the system now versus then, the accountability held on that. So, I will resend them to you so that you can be responsive to us, because those are the measurements that count. And the key for me is not if we're saving money, are we saving money?
No, we are not saving money.
All right, so, it doesn't really matter whether we're saving money, if, to me, and I shouldn't say that in front of President Clark, but if we are saving more kids. So, I'm gonna need tangible before and after kinds of.
Understood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and President.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Shapiro, I want to thank you for your service. You've been in this role for a short time, but you've been in the department for some time, and I know from my experience working with Councilman Tasko, who was Chair of Public Health and Human Services, I've had a chance to observe DHS for some time, and hearing some of the numbers that you testified to in reference to the increase of kinship care is also very heartening, and that's an issue that Councilman Tasko was very involved with kinship care from a grandparent perspective years ago. So, it's good to hear that we're making increases in reunifying families, because that will help some of our precious citizens, those being young people, be in a better place. I do have some questions in reference to the involvement of DHS in reference to the community schools model.
Sure.
Have you been part of the conversations in regard to community schools?
I have.
Provide those services, and what type of involvement have you had?
I have been involved in those conversations. Susan Gabreski met with the Health and Human Services Cabinet recently, and we began to talk about how we, as a cabinet, can support the community school effort. Additionally, she and I, we met one-on-one, because I believe that the community school effort is very much in line with what we're trying to do with Improving Outcomes for Children, the neighborhood delivery of social services. So, what I've pledged to do is work with her to show, to share data and mapping that we've already done of resources in the community, and I want to involve the CUAs in the discussion, because I think there is an opportunity to maximize the benefit, because we're all trying to do the same thing, is to make sure that folks can have access to services in their community.
Okay. Thank you. You also stated that the last 100 cases are being transferred over to CUAs.
Yes.
I've seen the CUAs from the very beginning, and I know the landscape has been a changing process, so I'm curious on your perspective in reference to oversight and case load between the CUAs and now DHS, considering that last group of cases are now going over to the CUAs. Can you give some perspective on the oversight? Because my understanding, the goal of having, getting out of the dual case provision was to have the DHS staffers to do more oversight of the CUAs. So, can you give some perspective on that?
Absolutely. So, we have the Division of Performance Management and Accountability, and that is where most of our monitoring and evaluation takes place. So, we are reviewing approximately 200 case files a month at the CUAs. We also have what we call, and we review those for quality and for compliance in areas most specifically rated to the safety, the assessment of safety of young people, as well as case planning, because under IOC, there's one single case plan for the family to follow, and so we're making sure that the plan is tailored appropriately to the family. We also have the Quality Service Review, which is an interdisciplinary review with outside partners, providers, or community members, where we actually go and meet with the consumers of the services. So, we'll meet with parents, we'll meet with kids, we'll go to talk to a teacher, to really make sure that there's significant planning being done for the family. We also have a visitation verification unit where we are reviewing case files and meeting with biological families to make sure that visitation is occurring as it's matched and documented in the case record. We also do annual evaluations for our CUAs and other subcontracting providers to make sure that they're meeting the compliance terms of the contracts. So, we, as I stated in my earlier testimony, we're working with Casey Family Programs to roll out a tool over the summer, which will allow us to measure quality in a better way, because we've been very focused on compliance, and so these quality indicators will be able to give us the data to know whether or not, or to inform in a better way whether or not IOC is actually working, or that this way of service delivery is actually working.
And so, that analysis based on quality as opposed to just compliance, is that going to be part of the RFP process that you talked about for the IOC review?
So, that's actually more to take a look at the process in general. The comprehensive review tool is actually going to be reviewing files and looking at particular cases. So, some of the kinds of things I'm talking about in terms of quality, so I would like to be able to know, and this is a measure that we put into our five-year plan, is that when a family receives in-home services, what's the percentage of families at a CUA that's actually getting stepped up to placement? Because if you, after you receive an in-home service and then you need to be placed, well, my question would be, what happened there? Was the service not appropriate? What were the circumstances that necessitated that placement? So, when I'm talking about looking at quality, I'm looking at, looking, measuring items to determine whether or not the services that we're providing are working, and so really trying to link the review to an outcome. And so, that's the work we're gonna roll out this new tool over the summer.
As you put together the RFP for the, kind of, the review of the IOC, this whole process, I would encourage you to work with not only entities that are involved in the provision of care, but also partners like District House 47 to get their input.
We absolutely plan to do so. So, we'll be talking, the reviewer will be talking to staff, both at the city as well as the CUAs, we'll be talking to parents, older youth, and other stakeholder providers, advocates.
Okay. So, I think even as you're putting together the RFP, having maybe a group of stakeholders to help you draft the RFP aspect, because they can provide information regarding what they've seen from their years of experience, both from the labor perspective, as well as the parent and advocate perspective as well, I think that would be important to kind of give you a comprehensive perspective of the entire IOC process from a number of different perspectives. Sometimes that may be critical, but I think at the same time, at the end, it'll provide you with a more full perspective of where is the IOC concept at this point in time.
Actually, the RFP, just to clarify, has actually been issued already, and so part of this RFP, I mean, part of this proposal will be to include all the input that you just discussed, because I agree it's 100 percent necessary.
Also, looking at the budget detail.
Yes.
On page 85, under the class 200, class 290, you have for FY '16 estimated obligations of about $36 million, about $37 million for vendor to be determined, but then for the FY '17 requests is about $44 million. And a description of those vendor-to-be-determined contracts, especially contracts and direct care. Can you get some, provide some more information?
Can you just refer me to the page number again?
On page 85, I'm sorry.
Page 85. 85, go. Give me one moment, please, I apologize.
And as you're looking for that, I have some additional questions, but I'll come back in the next round.
Should I respond to the question?
Yes.
If you have an answer, yeah, sure.
Oh, could you just repeat exactly what you said?
So, if you look on page 85, it says vendor to be determined, and you have 30, about $37 million FY '16 estimated obligations, and about $44 million for 2017 requests, and the description is special contracts and direct care. So, I was trying to get some perspective of what those vendors, that will be determined for those dollars.
I'm gonna have Marcia Dixon, our Director of Finance, respond.
Good afternoon, Councilman. That will be for our.
Please identify yourself officially.
Oh, I'm sorry. Marcia Dixon, Director of Budget and Finance for DHS. That would be for our adoption subsidy payments to the parents that adopt children.
Yep, gotcha.
So, that's why it's listed as vendor to be determined?
And so, you use various, so, those are actual payments going to?
To parents.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Yep, or permanent legal custodian.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you. Good afternoon, DHS.
Good afternoon, Councilwoman.
Councilman Jones has already began to offer inquiries regarding the CUAs, and he calls it a C-UA experiment, which a number of members of City Council might agree. I don't want to be redundant in what he has asked for, so know that there will be many members of council interested in the yield, the requests that he has made of you. So, I won't pounder that further. I want to move now to the end. I want to move now to the MBE/WBE side of the equation.
Sure.
And I need to know what has the agency done in a tangible way to make sure that COAs who get these large contracts from DHS, how well are they doing with regards to making sure that local, minority, and female-owned businesses are getting business through the COA contract?
So, Councilwoman, I appreciate the opportunity...
Speaking to the mic, and I gotta ask you to talk a little more slowly because psychologists say that it takes a minute for the brain to capture what's spoken verbally, okay?
Sure. So, thank you for the opportunity to address the council on this question. So we have been working very urgently to address the, to encourage our COAs. And actually, we have a 30% threshold for all our contracts for the year. We expect our COAs to use their, spend their discretionary money on vendors, both minority women, disabled, and local vendors. And so we have conducted networking opportunities. So we invited our COAs over three days to conduct networking opportunities so where they can meet with certified vendors to increase their participation. We have, we are contracting with Cornell University to come this summer to do a special workshop with our vendors to maximize spending under...
Okay, let me stop right there. You're giving me several examples. The word you used was encourage. What does that mean? Where's the tangible evidence that, because this is not a new issue?
No, it is not.
It's at least 18 months old. And I know in the last administration, Angela Dal Burton had a number of sessions with COA, the leadership of COAs. So now I need to know 18 months later, where's the tangible evidence that it's, that they are doing what has been asked of them because they're getting these gazillion-dollar contracts from the city?
So it's not encouraged, it's required. So I apologize for using that word.
And so where's the evidence of what the COAs have done thus far?
I can share with you, and I'm just gonna, I can share with you the information of the spending for each of our COAs.
Okay.
Give me one moment, please, just to find that.
So that's not in the testimony. So while you bring that forward, my second question is why are we going to a Cornell University to do anything in the city of Philadelphia when we have 90-plus higher education institutions here who I am quite sure are smart enough to do what? So how much money are we paying this Cornell contract?
So I don't have that information, but I will provide that to you.
Okay. Who made the decision with regards to Cornell?
I don't know when that decision was made.
When or who?
I will...
So we need all that information to be submitted, coupled with the information Councilman Jones is talking about.
Understood, Councilwoman.
Who made the decision, and when was it made, and for how much?
Okay. Would you like...
Please continue.
Sure. So I can share with you the dollar values that have been spent by the COAs? Is that something that you would like me to share with you?
That would be helpful.
Sure. So APM, or Association Puerto Ricanos, and Marcia...
I need you to talk louder.
APM.
And I need you to talk slower so we can hear you.
APM spent $127,342.
Out of a contract of what?
APM's contract is, and I will give you that total dollar amount. APM's contract is for $24,781,191.
And that's it?
May I just add?
Please.
Sure. So the contract, just so folks can understand and so council can understand the way the contract is, we program fund the COAs. So we pay for the staffing. There are two staffing budgets. One is for case management staff, and one is for prevention.
Okay.
And we also pay as a pass-through to the subcontractors the maintenance dollars. And so those are dollars that are spent for the care of young people who are in placement. And so while the contract is $24 million, the maintenance portion of that is $13 million.
Okay.
And so when we look at discretionary dollars, the money that the COA can invest into the community on professional services or items, so APM actually only had $129,000 of discretionary dollars built into their contract. And so they actually spent $127,000.
Okay. So how soon can we get a breakdown of all the COAs, what their total contract dollars were, and how much was spent locally? A column that says locals, locally spent?
Yes.
MBEs and WBEs?
I can get that to you very quickly.
And for clarity, let me not miss, be disparaging with regards to Cornell University. I have three nieces and a nephew that went to Cornell. I'm just concerned that, that just raises a lot of red flags for us. And this is a song we've been singing for the last 15 years. And it has to be justified while we go out of the city for a major contract to a distinguished higher institution four hours from here when we got 95 minutes from here.
I will look into that. I understand your concerns completely.
Let's now move to, so we can get the breakdown of the MBE/WBE by COA, by when?
I can get that to you next week, Councilwoman.
Okay. The bell has rung. I'll wait till the next round.
Thank you. She recommends Councilwoman Kim.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
So some of my questions are a little bit around some things which have come into the news recently, but DHS has requested an increase in the budget. And I guess one of the concerns has been the ways in which some of the concerns have been raised by COAs about how they're treated within the DHS system. So we already know that, it doesn't sound like, you know, I know that we're gonna, you're looking at exploring on doing a study, but there have been some red flags that have already been raised, including recent stories about caseworkers who have significant increases in caseloads at the COA level. Many providers have expressed concern about their ability to make visits. There was a recent concern about some of the workers who may have been falsifying documents, that kind of thing. But there's a big question about why DHS isn't putting more effort into looking at the COA structure, what kinds of supports they actually need, and whether the funding stream matches the ability of their, their capacity to meet the contract's demands.
So, thank you. I first want to address the most, one of the very serious issues that you raised in your question, which was the recent stories about falsification of visitation. And I just want to say that that is taken so extremely seriously by me and my leadership team and the city of Philadelphia, that falsification of visits is completely unacceptable and also unacceptable to the COA leaders. And we have discussed it several times. We, when we...
I did want to emphasize, though, that my point about raising that was more that the COAs have complained about this dramatic increase in the level of caseloads that's having this kind of, you know, obviously those are extreme situations and not the norm. But the concern is about this increase in the actual cases being delivered to these agencies.
So I actually share the same concern, that our caseloads are too high because we have too many families in the system. And so we are urgently working from looking at the front end to the back end at what we can do to shrink the size of the system. So it really begins with making sure that we have prevention services that are aligned with our mission of diverting families. We also need to make sure that we are accepting the right families for investigation. And if there are services that we can provide to them to keep them out of the system, we need to be doing that in a better way. We also, after a year, fiscal year of slowing down of our exits, we need to increase our exits safely of children leaving the system. So we are beginning to really use data to look at families who have been receiving services for, in my mind, you know, too long. So if children have been in care for three years or more, we need to take a look at every single one of those cases and figure out why and what changes do we need to make to that family's plan to effectively safely close those cases. For families that have been getting services for one year or more, we need to, in-home services, that is supposed to be a six, nine, 12-month service. So why is the family open for more than one year? And so we need to, I'm working with the COAs to kind of take a look at case-by-case basis. The other thing that we've recently do with the COAs is because they came to me and said we would like some more flexibility in how our positions are funded. And so I asked each of the COAs to come and submit a proposal by which if they wanted to have folks swap into different positions, maybe they wanted to, instead of having an after-care worker, they wanted an additional case manager to help bring down the caseloads. And so we've looked at each of those plans, and we're starting to approve those plans. So we're trying to give the COAs the autonomy and how they feel would be the best way to run their business and to achieve the outcomes that we are asking them to achieve.
So I'm confused because it sounds like, from what, I mean, is the DHS budget done in dialogue with the COAs to determine like what kind of relief they need now?
So the COA contracts, as I mentioned before, are at this point program-funded, meaning they give us a budget which would be their expenses for the staff, the salaries, the fringe benefits, the equipment. We pay the rent, we pay those expenses. We are part of the, you know, we are, the state supervises the county's child welfare system, so our budget is a needs-based budget and plan, and we have to submit that plan to the state government for approval.
So I think that there's a lot more questions about how DHS is, you know, how this budget is working to understand the COA situation because it seems like it is really serious. And I know that you're doing this study, but it seems like there are some clear red flags that are already going up, everything from the increases in placement to the foster care shortage to a whole set of other issues that seem to direct where things need to go ahead of a broader study. But switching gears for just a minute, I did want to ask about the number of children who are in out-of-home placement, and particularly if DHS controls the contracts for students who receive out-of-home placement, including contracts for adjudicated youth.
I'm sorry, what's your question?
How many children are in out-of-home placement and whether you control the contracts for where these children go for out-of-home placement?
So there's approximately 6,100 children in the legal custody of DHS.
Right. How many of those are in home placement?
In home placement, none of those. 6,100 are in out-of-home placement.
Out-of-home placement.
And about 2,000 families we service with in-home services.
So one of the contracts that has come to light has been, to some extent, Mid-Atlantic. And Mid-Atlantic in particular has been flagged in previous years for being a place that was caught up in the whole scandal involving Juvenile Law Center and identifying young people who are sent there. And in the investigations around Mid-Atlantic, there have been a lot of questions about care and particularly about how young people are treated, and especially young people who are vulnerable with low IQs or particularly mental health needs which they specifically market for. Could you talk to me a little bit about why DHS is contracting with Mid-Atlantic?
So Mid-Atlantic is a placement for children who are involved in the delinquent system. And the court orders young people to be placed at Mid-Atlantic, and we, as the city's Child Welfare Agency, pay the cost of those children at Mid-Atlantic. And just to give you a sense of the number of youth, in FY16, as of March 31st, 2016, 148 young people had been placed at Mid-Atlantic. Some of the youth, so they're, they've been adjudicated delinquent, and some of the youth also have an open dependency case, so they're dual-involved or what we call shared case management.
Can judges place youth into homes which have not been approved by DHS?
So the court would only place a youth into a licensed or a certified facility.
And that that...
And if the court had a placement that they wanted us to explore, we would end up entering into a contract to pay for that.
Right. So you can, they can only place students into placements where, which have a contract with DHS? They can't go outside the DHS contract to place the student?
If the court found a placement that they wanted to, us to contract with, they could order us to enter into a contract, and we would have to pay for that placement.
Right. So are they ordering you to contract with Mid-Atlantic, or are you voluntarily in that contract?
So we have, I'd have to check and see how long we've been in contract with Mid-Atlantic because I don't know the question to that. But the way the delinquent system works is that the judge will order a child to a specific facility. Unlike in the dependent system, the city or the Child Welfare Agency, or in some cases the COA, would choose which is the best facility or program suited for that young person.
Madam Chair, just one more question. Do you provide judges with an assessment or an analysis of any of these placement homes in terms of the quality of the care that they give and the kind of outcomes that they give so that judges are aware of the quality of the homes in which they send young people to?
So we do annual evaluations of the facilities, and I would need to circle back to see whether or not those evaluations are sent to the court on a routine basis. But when there are concerns regarding a provider, we are certainly in contact with the Juvenile Probation Department in the court regarding concerns with a particular provider.
Have you raised any concerns about Mid-Atlantic?
So we have been in discussions with the court about some concerns with Mid-Atlantic.
And yet there are still 148 placements that continue to go there from judges?
So at this point, we've, we've had discussions with Mid-Atlantic, and we raised some concerns, and they're addressing those concerns.
How are they addressing them?
So they're providing us actually this week with a plan of correction of things, items that we wanted them to address.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I just did want to put on the record that there have been a lot of concerns about Mid-Atlantic in particular, and that a number of individuals may have said that they're not aware of any kinds of evaluations that are made available to the courts, and that this is an important area for DHS to review its contracts with out-of-home placements that are extremely expensive, and that Mid-Atlantic in particular has been flagged in previous areas for quality of care, outcomes, and for treatment of young people. And I would definitely like to see any evaluation that's been made public, and particularly if they use physical restraint at the facility.
Okay.
Thank you.
So please restate for me, what is the protocol with regards to alerting judges of placement agencies that are not well-suited for our children?
So if, if it comes to my attention that there is a particular concern with a provider, I will often, or will contact the administrative judge of family court or the probation department to let them know of a particular concern. And we will address the issue. We sometimes do unannounced investigations or visits to our providers. We will send a team, a joint multidisciplinary team from probation, DHS, nurses, psychologists to go meet with our students or our clients at these facilities. So we work together and share information and make sure that all folks are apprised of what's going on.
So contact means what? Is that a written notice?
Sometimes it's written or a phone call, depending on the nature of the concern. If it's an immediate, it's absolutely a phone call, and I'm not, I don't wait.
And in the last four years, how many agencies have been brought to the attention of judges and consequently were taken off the list to no longer look after our kids?
So, Councilwoman, I want to make sure that I do my research and give you an accurate number, so I will get back to you on that.
So that answer to that question needs to be coupled with the questions raised by Councilman Jones and others.
Yes, ma'am.
And for the record, I worked in state, the state court unit early in my career, working with probation officers responsible for finding placement for kids. And the practice was when we learned of an entity outside the city or inside of the city, we did the investigation, and they were no longer awarded the privilege to take care of our kids. So knowing what that is will be helpful.
Understood.
Okay. Councilman Dom?
Thank you, Chairwoman. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Councilman.
First of all, I learned recently that you're the chief of staff who's acting as the commissioner, and I thank you for that service because it's not an easy job.
Thank you.
So I have a few questions, and I guess we'll have a couple rounds here. But we have a budget of approximately $103 million.
That is, that is the city share of our budget.
City share, right.
Yes.
And so, you know, we're tackling this issue, along with my colleague Helen, about homeless youth. And I was wondering what percentage of that budget is allocated? youth, and I was wondering what percentage of that budget is allocated to homeless youth?
I have that information. One moment, please. So we spend approximately $2.5 million on supportive services and/or housing for youth or families that are involved in the child welfare system.
So at the testimony, maybe two weeks ago, there was a comment by, I think it was Covenant House, who said they needed another $2.4 million because they've turned away, they're turning away kids every day, and they needed at least 70 beds. Is there some way to make that happen?
So I would certainly like to explore that, and as I mentioned, we are in the process of looking at our prevention, array of prevention services, and we'll be making decisions over the next few weeks, and that is certainly an area that is important to us.
Okay, thank you. I want to ask you a question that might be a little sensitive. It has to do with overtime.
Yes.
And so I was looking at a chart of the overtime in DHS, and some of the people make like $50,000, $60,000, but get like overtime of $80,000. And so I'm just wondering, is that, is there, is there any kind of a way of valuing people's performance for salary views in DHS, number one, and number two, is there a way to cut down on that overtime, because that seems really unusual?
So I am actively exploring with our leadership team and ways that we can reduce our overtime budget. We spend approximately $12 million a year on overtime. The bulk of our overtime is really in the hotline and investigations area, as well as at the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Services Center. As I stated earlier, we have received, we have received an enormous influx of new reports or investigations to our hotline. Before we started IOC, we had, we handled about 14,000 investigations, and this year we are scheduled to handle 19,000 investigations. I have several vacancies in my hotline and investigations unit, which is why I'm moving to, I hired staff in May, as well as I'm moving staff from the backend to fill those vacancies.
I have a list, I have a list here of about 20 people-
Yes.
-who've made more money in overtime than salary. It just seems like very unusual.
I think those people, and I know there are some of my employees that are on that list, and I think that there are some employees, more than others, that volunteer to handle overtime. Two of those employees I know work our hotline and investigation, and one works at our Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Services Center, where we must keep in line with the adult-child ratios. I'm hoping as I fill vacancies, it will reduce the amount of overtime. All overtime is approved by a supervisor. One of the particular people does volunteer to do trips to assess the safety of our young people that are placed outside the city of Philadelphia. So some folks volunteer to work overtime. Actually, at the Youth Study Center, there are often, excuse me, the Philadelphia Juvenile Justice Services Center, there are often folks who actually are forced to work involuntary overtime so that we can stay in line with the state mandated ratios. So some of that overtime on the juvenile justice side is actually involuntary overtime.
Is the problem in filling positions the base salary that's offered?
I'd actually have to explore why it's hard to pull in a class of folks. I know that we tried to get about 25 people to work, both in the social service, social service trainee position, and as well as the youth's attention counselor, and we were not able to yield the amount of people that we needed. So I've been in this position for three months, and that is one of the things that I need to address, because it's critical that we can respond to the work that's necessary. So that is something that I plan to, actually, I've already started to schedule a meeting with my HR department.
So the other statistic I'll leave you with, because you're new at this, so you can tackle this one, is there's 205 out of 1,548 people in DHS making over $20,000 overtime. Just seems really high.
I understand, and we need to take, go back and take a look at who those people are, whether or not some of those folks are involuntary, and, you know, we want to make sh, and like I said, I need to really dig deep down into what areas they are, and I'm hoping that as we fill the vacancies in the hotline and we move staff into hotline and investigations, that our overtime numbers will decrease.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I certainly have a number of follow-up questions to Councilman Dom's, but I'm going to press my pause button and pass the baton to Councilwoman Sanchez.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
A couple of questions. You know, I want us to be careful when we view the uptick in cases as a bad thing, because it may be the fact that because there's more people on the ground, people are actually finding out about the services. So I want to be real careful sometimes how we phrase that.
Yes.
Because we would hope that it's because people know that we can provide intervention services. I wanted to talk a little bit, and, you know, I went through the growing pains with the COAs, they were all piloted in my district, you know, I work well with the organizations. I'm very concerned about us creating a totally privatized system and having no internal capacity and making people believe that people are so big. And letting people believe that they are so big that they cannot fail. And so my concern is that as we evaluate the model, we really don't lose sight of the fact that ultimately the city is responsible for our children and that we embrace the capacity that we have. So, you know, as we're looking and people are evaluating, it's not an either-or, it's an and. So I want to be careful with that. And then my question as it relates to that, you know, in light of what Councilman Dom was saying of overtime, if we have more adults, why can't we bring this caseload down?
If we have more what? I'm sorry?
We have more adults. We have the COA adults, we have our internal adults. Why are the caseloads continuing to be big? Because some people would say we're double the system.
So I want to make sure I address all your points. So to the second question, I think the reason that our system has grown so much is due to the influx in reports and our slowdown on permanencies.
The influx of what?
Reports. Reports and investigations, and when we went out and investigated those cases, we found that there was a safety threat that necessitated us opening a case, either on the in-home side or the placement side. We also did not do a good job in FY, we, I wish we did a better job in FY '15 of moving children to permanency. Kids stayed longer in care, and so when you have more kids coming in and the kids staying longer in foster care, the system is going to grow. And so all the work that we are doing now is focusing on making sure that we can safely divert families and make sure that we can safely either reunify children with their parents or find them other permanents. And so I'm pleased to say that we're doing a lot of good work on both those ends, but too soon to tell. I'm pushing my staff and the COAs to really work hard on those two areas. I actually approach the child welfare, the reform of the child welfare system as a community problem, so it's not just, ultimately, ultimately, it is DHS's responsibility, and it is my responsibility as the commissioner to make sure that we are running the system in an appropriate way. But DHS and the COAs need to work together, and that is how I've been approaching solving the problems that we have with the COA leadership and in partnership with the state. So we are supervised with the state, and the state is a good partner to us in terms of making sure that we're staying to task and doing what we need to do. The DHS staff are outstanding. They offer a significant amount of technical assistance, so we have city staff that are stationed in the COAs to provide technical assistance. We have city staff that are helping bring families to the table and facilitating family meetings, and it's not only in terms of they have the opportunity to share their wisdom and experience, but also to make sure that families are getting the most out of the process. So in my mind, as much as it's great for the families to be at the table and planning, it's also another way for us to be monitoring. So I look at teeming from both perspectives.
Okay. I mean, again, this is, we're now in year two, entering year three, and as we're evaluating and collecting data, let's be as objective as we possibly can around all of this. The other area that we had talked about briefly, and this is more of a statement, because now that we have kind of a Health and Human Services Cabinet again, under the leadership of Eva, we really need to work over the next year, as these systems are laid out, more transparency, and I know we're doing some co-location with Behavioral Health, more transparency to the amount of services and providers that are touching a family. I'm extremely concerned that we're still operating silos, and that as we look at community schools and all these other things that we're doing, somebody ultimately has to be able to tell us how much we're investing in a family, and are we investing appropriately in a family? And so, and again, this has been a growing pain for the COAs, you know, and everyone else. We want to provide a holistic approach, but until we bring light and transparency to it, the kids and the families are going to get caught up in the process. So again, as we evaluate, we collect data, what is it that's going out of behavioral health? What is it that is coming out of health? And are we managing those cases-
Yes.
-in a way that's in the best interest of the family? And I use this example, before, you know, we had several of our best-practice providers make presentations, and when I asked everybody what the fee was per child, it was like $75,000. The kid needs a home, let's buy the kid a home. You know, why are we spending $75,000 on providers when the kid needs a home? But I think, I think this new structure provides an opportunity for us to really begin to look at that, and where there is duplicity in billing-
Thank you.
-that we will not be able to see until the systems talk to each other, whereas there is duplicity in billing for families, that needs to be more transparent. I think that's the only way we're going to hold the system more accountable, and that people are going to feel comfortable that the, you know, when you put health and behavioral health in DHS, you know, it's a $3 billion system. I think how we leverage that, you know, at this day and age, we've got to get better at it. So I'm hopeful that your new structure allows for that, but that is going to be my expectation as we move forward, because I don't want any system thinking it's too big to fail or that it's not publicly accountable, the way it should be.
So I understand exactly, and I think that collaboration is absolutely the way we need to approach this, and I know that Eva Gladstein actually wants to weigh in as well.
Good afternoon, Eva Gladstein, Deputy Managing Director for Health and Human Services.
Good afternoon.
I just want to thank the Councilwoman for raising that, making that comment, and just say that we have a data management office that existed previously, and we are trying to build the capacity of that data management office, and one of the first things that we're doing is looking at households, children, and families who are being served across the agencies to understand what services they're receiving and the costs and where we're paying for those, so we can get a better idea on a number of fronts. But from my point of view, primarily about how to focus our resources and how to prevent, you know, serve families before they enter into whatever one of our systems, be it the homeless system or the child welfare system, or needing some other more acute form of treatment from health or behavioral health. So we're working on that, and we have, you know, we, there are already some resources in place, so we hope to be able to do that within about the next six months, and we'll be happy to share that when we are able to do that.
I'll just say for the purposes of the record, Madam Chair, there has to be a creation of the political will to do so.
All righty.
This was tried many times before, and we disrupt our systems, and we upset people, and then we don't get to the goal. So the data, notwithstanding, I know Melissa's an attorney, notwithstanding the confidentiality issues, there really needs to be an administration political will-
Yes.
-to really tackle this, to tackle the song. So we will continue to, as you say, play the record. It's a broken record, but you're going to keep playing the song?
As long as it takes.
Okay.
And I'll state for the record that I came here 15 years ago, and even then, during the street administration, we were talking, discussing, debating, dialoguing, conversations about how we house systems all under DHS, talk better to each other, so that we don't have three case managers visiting a family. I, my office gets those calls, and then you have the flip side of the equation where children involved in truancy show up in court and the representative of the COA isn't even there, and that, that's very quite disturbing.
I agree.
So how long, how old are the COA contracts?
So the first COA began to take cases in January of 2013, but I think the contract began in July of 2012.
So each COA has a separate contract length, if you will?
So each COA has a year contract, one year with the ability to renew.
Forgive me? Repeat that?
Each COA contract is for one year.
And so what happens after that one year in terms of assessment, evaluation of whether or not they are worthy of being refunded?
So we do review the COA contracts, we review the services, we review the files for the, for the COAs, and we have to this point found that they've all been suitable enough to have their contracts renewed.
How many COAs do you have?
We have 10 COAs, seven providers.
And all COAs have been found worthy irrespective of the blemishes that have brought to your attention, have been refunded?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. To Councilman Dom's question, and his always very analytical breakdown of the numbers, thank you, Councilman Dom, with the amount given with regards to overtime, yet there are 308 vacancies. How do we reconcile that?
So I am trying to reconcile that. I am working to staff up our hotline and investigations section, not only with new staff or new hires that we just hired in May, but also transferring those social workers that were working in the ongoing service region. The bulk of those, that staff has been transferred to hotline and investigations. So as I begin to fill those vacancies with staff from other areas, I anticipate that overtime will go down, as well as my goal is to be able to assign investigative staff fewer reports each month.
Okay, I have others, but we'll continue it now with Councilman Jones.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm going to ease up, because this has been a rough day, and hope that the chair and others will call you back so that the unanswered questions get answered, but I want to put a couple more on your list.
Sure.
It's my understanding that we take more children from homes than the city of New York or Chicago. Is that true?
So I am not familiar with the rate of the placement rate is in those cities, but I am concerned that our placement population has grown. So as a result, we are working with KC Family Programs to get technical assistance in exactly that area, to really look at that decision. So we have an expert that's going to be coming in and looking at how we conduct our business from the time a call comes in, through the investigation and around that placement decision. And so I want to look at, so I believe in this, the principles of IOC are really based that children should receive services in their homes, and so we need to have the right services to provide for those families that need that additional support, and we need to be making sure that we're making the right decisions. So we're taking a step back and looking at that decision. Unfortunately, I don't have the data to compare Philadelphia to other cities, but I do want to look at that.
So when you come back, could you please provide that to the chair?
Yes, sir.
In addition, is it also equally true that the COAs make their money, or in part make their money, based on the number of stays that an individual stays at? Is it, is it per day or per placement?
So that is not, not accurate. We program funds, or it's a 250 contract with the COAs, and so we pay the staff salaries for the COAs, and we pass through the money that goes to the foster parents. So that's a pass-through, there is no profit there or anything. There's no incentive, there's no financial incentive to keep a young person in care.
That's very important, because even though they're nonprofits, they derive revenue, and we want to make sure that it is not with the children's interests, not with the revenue interests as opposed to the children's interests of payment. And that's one of the reasons I asked about the question of more placements than big cities like Chicago or New York. So there is no profit motive that you're telling me. My concern is that we have to, I've said it in this chamber a number of times, if it isn't measured, it isn't managed. So we need to, I'm not going for that, but, so the reason why I want to call you back is so that we can get quantitative analysis of, was it more- of, was it more effective and cost-effective before versus now? Because it's, it's coming out of the taxpayer's pocket, and I would not mind the cost if we could show correlation to positive outcomes. So we have to measure that.
So I'm, of course, willing to come back and, and provide you with any data that I, that I can, um, but I agree, we need to make sure that we are getting the outcomes that we're asking for, and so I'm earnestly working to be able to do that. So with the assistance of KC Family Programs, with this new review tool, with changing our five-year plan measures to begin to kind, to take a look at tying how we monitor to outcomes, absolutely focused on that, and I, and I agree.
So there's a psychological evalu-, once a child is taken from a home, there's a psychological evaluation of the child and parent?
It depends on the need of the child. So certainly children, young people are evaluated and, and provided with treatment as soon as it's, any issues are identified. There are some times when we ask parents to have an evaluation, or oftentimes the court will ask parents to have an evaluation. And so we make appropriate referrals. If parents need mental health treatment, we make sure that they get that mental health treatment in the community.
And with an eye towards if they complete all their prescribed steps, that they will, there will be reunification?
So every child, when they come into care, their goal is reunification, and so the case manager at the KUA will work with the family to develop a single case plan, and it will list objectives on that plan designed to get the, the young person back to her parents or his parents.
So what I'm gonna need also, Madam Chair, is analysis of how many parents have to go through that, and then what the outcomes were after completing those steps, or what the reasons were for them not completing those steps. Because I, I just don't want there to be that hurdle without the end product, and not, and the reason I, I mention this, Madam Chair, is I too get complaints from constituents.
Yes.
And sometimes they're valid, and sometimes they're not, but what the numbers do is tell us the story.
So we can certainly provide you with the numbers of young people that come into care, the number of young people that we reunify in a given year, and the number of folks whose parental rights are terminated and we seek adoption for them, so we do have that data, and I'm, I'm happy to provide that. Um, I should say that every family has an individualized, single-case plan, so some families will be working on issues related to mental health, drug and alcohol, truancy, and so every family has an individualized plan, that's what we're trying to do. And so to that end, um, some families have different objectives than others.
One other measurement, there, each child has an advocate assigned to them?
Yes, sir.
Each, a parent has a advocate assigned to them?
That is correct.
In cases-
So here's the beauty, here's the beauty of this, of this process. Everybody gets a chance to have their say at the appropriate hour, and so for others who have something on their heart or their spirit that they want to register on the record, you'll certainly get a chance to do that during public testimony, and if that, maybe even at the end of this hearing. However, it's exceedingly important that we are respectful, everybody comes with a perspective, and we need to hear all of them. If you want the mic, then register that with the clerk, and we will be sure to give you an opportunity.
Thank you.
That's the beauty of this forum.
Thank you for the-
Councilman Jones?
Thank you for the decorum, Madam Chair. So my measurement request is when adult parent advocate and child advocate disagree, what are the statistics of who wins, what, what, what happens then, and who gets more weight? I, I just need to see what those numbers are.
So the court, the judge is ultimately the person who decides what happens in a case, and unfortunately, I don't have that data drilled down to that level, case by case, as to if a child advocate asserts one issue and a parent advocate asserts another. So there are thousands of cases in, in, in the court system, so every young person who is in the custody of DHS has an open case at DHS, uh, in family court.
One of the reg changes, Madam Chair, that we instituted was the sibling advocacy that they could advocate on behalf of their sibling. It's my understanding that the law was changed, to your knowledge, no? So just to give you, in the hearing, one of the issues came up where two kids, two siblings were separated, and the brother felt some kind of way about where the, the sister was, and wanted to register that kind of concern. It was my understanding that this body passed a law that required the brother or sister who had concern for the other sibling to be able to register that. That is not happened?
I, I'm not, um, don't know of a law around siblings.
Please, please, please state your name.
I'm sorry, my name is Kimberly Ali. I'm the Chief Implementation Officer for Improving Outcomes for Children IOC. So I don't know a law in terms of sibling advocacy. You may be referring to the Fostering Connection Act, and under that act, we work very vigorously to ensure that siblings are placed together. When siblings are not placed together, we ask for the DHS social worker, the KUA social worker, to justify why can't siblings be placed together. Oftentimes, if siblings can't be placed together, sometimes it's a mental health reason, um, they may be exhibiting some sexy, sexually reactive behaviors or some other safety-type issues. I actually want to go back to the other question that you asked, Councilman, in reference to the single case plan, and in reference to advocates, child advocates and parent advocates. What we are, do at the Department of Human Services and under IOC, we actually implemented a family team conferencing model. The Commissioner talked about that model when she did her testimony, and reference to this was the opportunity so that parents can have a voice at the table. But in addition to parents having a voice at the table, we also have their support system that comes to the table as well. In addition, we invite the child advocate, as well as the parent advocate, to the table and any other stakeholders, so that we can develop that single case plan in conjunction with the family. So it's not just the KUA case manager that is at the table with the family, it is a team that's at the table, and that family team conference is facilitated by DHS supervisors, as well as there's a DHS social worker that is at the conference as well, that records everything so that the parents can walk out with their next step. So when we rolled out Improving Outcomes for Children, we also rolled out the family team conferencing. And because we feel that advocate participation, um, both parent and child advocate participation, as well as children's participation, the age of 12 years of old and older, um, as well as parents and informal, informal supports, we began to start tracking the invitations, um, as well as the participations of those particular individuals at the family team conferencing model.
So specifically, Madam Chair, and I'll end, I'm more concerned about siblings.
Okay.
That if, if Eva is my older sister and she is concerned about my well-being in a placement, that she has some right to register that concern and that voice be heard. If I'm being abused because I'm willing to talk to Ms. Gladstein as opposed to others, that voice should be heard.
Registered as well.
And registered.
Councilman, may I just share some data to that specific point? So I'm looking at data that's the placement of sibling groups together, who, siblings who live in foster care, and out of 1,243 sibling groups, 706 of those sibling groups are placed together.
That's a good number.
And 537 are in split groups, and sometimes when we say split groups, it might be two and two, not necessarily three and one.
What, what I'm more concerned about is, I, I appreciate that number, I really do.
Okay.
But what I'm also concerned about in the cases where I have a belief that, Eva has a belief that I am being abused, and how that gets registered, or how those concerns, and even if it's not abuse, I don't like how they treat her, but it might not rise to the level of abuse, but it may be a level of concern that that sibling should be able to advocate for my well-being, particularly if I'm in tender age.
Understood. And to that end, every child who's in family court in front of a judge has an advocate, and that advocate should be meeting and discussing with that child. Now certainly there are some young people who are too young to communicate, but for those children who are able and are verbal, they should be meeting and discussing those kinds of issues with their attorney. And for our older youth, um, folks, you know, 13, 14 or older, we also have the Commissioner's Action Response Office that responds to grievances or complaints, and so we certainly could help facilitate, um, making sure that the young person has a voice or a connection to their, to their attorney.
Wow. I don't think we quite are connecting, but I will, I will-
I apologize, okay.
No, no, it's, no, no, you're doing, you're citing good things.
Okay.
But the very specific concern I have is if Eva believes that she feels some kind of way, whether it's as, something as simple as the school that I go to isn't teaching me, or the parents aren't paying enough attention to the homework, or those kinds of concerns should be raised to a level because there is that connection that we want to preserve, that I'm looking out for, that Eva's looking out for her younger brother. And I did use that example, younger.
To my brother.
I, I think I want to simply state that, um, what both the Commissioner and Kim have said is that that occurs at the family team conferences, and then we do what we can to encourage that to occur in family court, but we're not controlling the venue in family court, so, um, and I'm looking to Kim and Jessica behind me to confirm that. But, but I think, I think the value you're placing upon this is understood, and the venue that DHS controls is the family team conference, so that's a value there, and that's strongly encouraged in the family court. Again, it's, it's the judges who are controlling their courtroom, rightly so, and so they're going to make an ultimate decision about who speaks and, and how to weigh that voice that they hear.
So I'm gonna give it up, I'm gonna give it up, but the specific case that came into my office was a family of three, two older sisters, younger brother, and the younger brother was placed in a neighborhood-
Mm-hmm.
-that was high-risk, and he was exhibiting behaviors that were, like he was being pulled into some bad neighborhood activities. And they're trying to say, but, but the house is okay, this is okay, so it doesn't rise to the level of abuse, but they could see they know their brother well enough to know that he was easily influenced-
Yes.
-by that group, and that advocacy should be heard.
I agree, and I, I actually applaud siblings who are looking out for each other, and I think there are many points in the process. A young person could talk to their KUA case manager to raise those concerns, they could talk to their attorney, they could talk to us and the Commissioner's Action Response Office, and, um, opportunities, as Eva Gladstein talked about, the table. So I, I completely understand, and that is important, that young people look out for each other, and certainly families should be looking out for each other.
I'm gonna give it up, Madam Chair. I'm, if it's a law, we'll introduce something. If it's not there in a official right capacity, not if I check in, but it is my right to look out for my brother or sister.
And, and it might be in order to have an offline conversation with your designee on that specific case and why you believe the advocacy on behalf of that young person is not meeting your, your expectations, based on what you know about the family.
So that specific case had a good outcome, and that's because we, we put a lot of time into it, and they're unified, all of them are working there, what is it called, emancipated?
They, when they leave, we leave the system?
Yeah.
Yes.
They, they declared themselves independent, whatever.
Okay.
And they're, they're living as a family.
Very well.
But for those cases that don't wander into-
Yes.
...a councilperson's office, I worry about.
Understood.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome, Councilman Jones. Councilman Green?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to follow up on some questions that you had asked earlier, uh, and you made reference to diversity of contracts. In my understanding that, um, in the contract, I think the contract we're talking with APM, they only had about $129,000 of discretionary, and of that $127,000 were going to firms of color, in my understanding?
I'm, I'm sorry, Councilman, I can't hear you.
Of the amount that APM receives of the contract, about, only about $129,000 was discretionary-
That's correct.
And of that 129, about 127 they were using with diverse firms?
Yes.
Okay. I think part of the issue, uh, and this is, I think, a mistake that the city made some years ago, is that, um, at that time, MBEC got out of the work of certification as well as oversight for nonprofits.
Yes.
For many years, I've worked, um, as many people know, worked with Councilman Tascow, and that whole aspect of oversight of nonprofits, um, did not occur by the city. So I think it's somewhat unchallenging for DHS to really do that type of oversight when we have an entity that's fully responsible for, um, looking into having a diverse workforce, I'm sorry, diverse contracting, um, on, on, with city contracts, but they only focus on the for-profit side and don't focus on the nonprofit side. And I think it's really challenging for DHS to, um, provide the services as well as that oversight when we have an entity in the, in the city that's not doing that. And I think that's something that we need to, so that way, entities, not just like DHS, not just like behavioral health, not just like the Health Department, have a better ability to help make sure that we have more local-based nonprofit providers and providers of color can participate. Because, from, from my understanding, from what Ms. Shapiro's doing, and also maybe her predecessor, been trying to engage nonprofits, especially local nonprofits of color, in the contracting process with KUAs, but we have an entity here in the city of Philadelphia that's not providing them the tools and the resource they need to do a better job in that regard. So I think that's something that we need to make sure that we make that change since we're in a new administration, so that way organizations like DHS have better tools to increase that type of participation. A second point I want to follow up on, the issue that Councilman Sanchez talked about, the silos. And I think one of the concerns that happens is that we have a major issue and then we forget.
Yep.
During the unfortunate situation with Danielle Kelly, we had this Blue Ribbon Commission, and we had every entity involved. We had the First Judicial District, we had DHS, we had, um, behavioral health, we had the Health Department, we had outside of the city providers all involved and trying to come up with different ideas to address the lifespan of a child from birth to adulthood. And then after we had a change in administration, that Blue Ribbon Commission information, based on, on a shelf, is not being used.
That's right.
So one of the things I would suggest is as DHS goes through the process of doing their review on the entire IOC, let's take that document off the shelf, look at it, see if there's information in that, um, documentation, and even talk with some of the stakeholders like DC47, some of the other providers, and parents and others, so we can look at the IOC process and do a review. Because I think that will help us in reference to how we now analyze this information going forward.
I think that's an excellent idea. It's always good to take a look at things that have done, been done before.
Have you, any one of you at the table seen the Blue Ribbon Commission document?
Many years ago. I have not looked at it in a very long time. Many years ago, I have not looked at it in a very long time.
It was a year's worth of work by prominent professionals across the system, as Councilman Green already articulated, with a, a, a number of recommendations for each system, and, um, the recommendation is, is, is well-placed. So as you report back to a number of questions that have been raised by members of this body, also provide a statement on what you would do with regards to that Blue Ribbon Commission document.
I will.
Uh, Councilwoman Blackwell? Councilman J- Green? Please.
Back to the issue of, of having a political will. Unfortunately, sometimes we have short memories, and with all the things that occur, we move on to a new topic, a new issue, but, um, we need to make sure we stay on the path, to make sure we incorporate that information. Uh, I know Ms. Shapiro, from her statement, says she had worked and worked in reference to that Blue Ribbon Commission, so I, I believe that will get incorporated. But at the same point, we need to make sure that we use all the arrows in our quiver, meaning not just other city departments, but also stakeholders outside of the city that can participate in the process, uh, so that way we can kind of come out with a better idea going forward.
Thank you, Councilman Green. Councilwoman Blackwell?
Thank you. Um, I don't know, maybe about three months ago, um, Councilman Johnson and I visited a program in West Philadelphia for children with some programs, I believe it was called the CAT Program. I was told yesterday, I ran into somebody who was saying that that program was, uh, was very interesting. They had rooms for When Kids Act Out, counselors and people who talked to them, and we were both impressed with the program, and they tell me that that program is, uh, closing. Can you give me some information about it?
I am not familiar with that program, but I certainly can look into it for you.
All right, thank you. So we look forward to you getting back to us with regard to that. So much of this hearing has talked about the KUA program- So much of this hearing has talked about the COA program, and from the time it started until now, we've all had concerns about it, and, you know, in an effort to save money, it's not supposed to make it this much worse. We even, we see too that, in your report, you talk about 25% of children being placed, 25% of those on the list. And these other questions we received where they talk about a University of Pennsylvania professor writing a book about how children of color are so left out, and she first even asked if they can't have more CLS lawyers assigned to make sure that these children of color are not so much disproportionately left out. So we want to ask how you're dealing with that whole issue with regard to children who are chosen and children who are not, since your sent you numbers, according to your report, are just 25%.
Councilwoman, I'm not sure I understand your question. Could you clarify that for me, please?
I'm batting zero today.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. In terms of children who get placed, permanently placed, 25%, according to your records, are being, are found permanent placement. So, well, let's talk a little bit about what happens to the rest of the children, and how do you deal with so many disproportionate children of color being left out? And also, with regard to children being taken out of their homes, do you have any criteria on how many end up in the criminal justice system?
So the 25% number that you refer to is the percentage of young people that have been in placement that we've successfully achieved permanency for. I don't have the percentage for you today to tell you how many young people who enter the criminal justice system have been in foster care. I don't have that data. I apologize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna let it go, let that 25% go too. Thank you.
I believe we will have a chance to revisit that and the subsequent information that will return to us. You're welcome. A good afternoon, Councilman Toplenberger?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a number of questions. I understand that under the new Sandusky laws, there has been an increase in the amount of calls and cases. However, can you give me the number of employees you had handling day-to-day cases for families and children under the old system? And under the old system, I mean, pre-CUA, COA versus the number of employees you have handling those cases day-to-day at this time, once everything has shifted to the COAs?
I can give you that information. In FY 12, actually FY 13 is when we opened up the first COA, and we had 677 staff that were providing case management and non-case management functions. In FY 16, we have 592 social workers who are providing case management and non-case management functions. I have data going back to FY 10, but I picked FY 13 because that was when we opened up the first COA.
No, I understand. You asked for a budget increase of approximately $2 million. However, what? No? That's incorrect.
Actually...
Am I wrong? If I'm wrong, then I will...
We actually asked for a budget increase of approximately $400,000 in the general fund portion of our budget, and that...
Okay. Well, I always like to...
I'm sorry?
Get my numbers right, too. A lot of numbers here. Okay. I get that, but...
I'm sorry. Let me just be clear. Let me look at my documents. Marcia, if you want to clarify.
Sure.
Madam Chair, deduct that time from my time? No.
We will be mindful, Councilman.
Hi, if you are referring to the $2.1 million in purchase of services, that's directly related to the maintenance, the placement services for the children that are in care.
Okay. That's on our contract. Let me ask you then, as I read the budget, there are currently, in your current budget, 308 vacancies, budget to be filled over the course of the year, even though this is being done even after these cases have been transferred to the COAs. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have the vacancies, and we are in the process of reassigning some staff, and as we move throughout fiscal year '17, we will hire as appropriate to make sure that the needs, both in the front end, in the monitoring, and the technical assistance are filled over the course of the year.
It was my understanding, though, that the way I view it, that the COAs were to drive down the employee numbers. Is that correct, or am I incorrect?
So when we began IOC, the idea was that the city staff would shrink over time due to attrition. And we have actually, from when we started IOC, we are at about 132 positions less on the city side. However, my concern is that the size of the system has grown so much over the past few years that I need to make sure that I'm staffed up appropriately. I don't, I need to make sure that I can respond, as the Commissioner of DHS, that we're responding to the calls that are coming in, for us to process those calls and to investigate those reports. In addition, because the number of children has expanded in placement and the number of families getting in-home services, I need to make sure that we're monitoring those families appropriately, so I don't feel that we can... I feel that we need to continue to fill positions as opposed to shrink the city staff.
Repeat that last statement.
I don't think that we can shrink the city staff. I would like to fill positions so that we can make sure that we're doing our job in terms of handling the calls that come in, and monitoring, and providing technical assistance. So we were supposed to, the idea behind IOC was that we would shrink on the city side, but we have not shrunk as much, I think, as we expected to due to the growth in the system over the past few years.
When you have contracts for mandated services, why do they take so long to get these contracts implemented?
So, the city contracting process is a complicated one, but I am working earnestly to make sure that we can shorten the amount of time it takes to conform a contract. Since I've become Commissioner, I've been very focused on making sure that as we identify a service that we want to continue for FY '17, we are issuing our pre-contract letters, and in fact, we've already begun to do so within the past few weeks.
Well, I like that.
I've also, I'm sorry.
No, no, you finish.
I've also instructed my staff to make sure that we, there are many steps in the contracting process, and so there are steps that we own, and then there are steps that the provider has to handle, and then there are steps that we work with our finance partners and our law partners. And so we track very carefully where contracts are, and I'm very mindful of the fact that contracts need to be conformed promptly and quickly so that providers can get the payments. It is critical for our providers to get paid for the work that they do, and most importantly, it is critical for our foster parents to get paid for the work that they do and for taking care of our young people.
Yeah.
In FY 16, we were delayed in getting our contracts conformed, and I am determined that we will be ready to go in FY '17.
We're looking forward to that improvement, because these contractors are also nonprofits, and they're not major banks.
I agree 100%.
And as well as the folks that are actually on the very forefront as foster parents. From the overall picture, 5,000 feet in the air, you can say that it's hard to imagine over the last year the city of Philadelphia is averaging 400 reported cases per month of serious child abuse, meaning we've had about 4,800 children per year that are being abused in this city and brought to DHS out of the 400,000 children that are reported to live in this city. We're talking about a big picture, unless these are overlapping numbers over the next 10 years. If the pattern continues, approximately 50,000 children, or a little more than 10% of our children, will be involved in serious abuse cases. Knowing this, knowing your job over the years, and uncovering the facts, what do you believe is leading to this type of levels of abuse?
I think there are many reasons that lead to abuse. I think that our families are under a constant, so many of the families in Philadelphia are under a constant state of stress. I think poverty has something to do with it. I think trauma has something to do. I, too, am concerned that we need to be focusing and buying services that reach folks in the community so that we can be preventing child abuse and neglect. We track, we track child abuse, we track near fatalities and fatality reports. We have an excellent Act 33 team, which is an interdisciplinary team, which is chaired by the medical examiner of the city of Philadelphia, and on that team are representatives from the school district, the police, the DA's office, Behavioral Health. And the team works, each of those cases, there are certain criteria that bring a case to that team, but we review those cases and we make recommendations on how to prevent child abuse and neglect in the future. And those recommendations are brought to the Commissioner's attention, and then I or the prior Commissioner has assigned those recommendations to be implemented. And I'm proud to say that we've made many changes as a result of reviewing cases, because this is really important work, and we can't be in a situation where children get seriously injured.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, thank you.
You're welcome, Councilman. Returning now to Councilwoman Kim.
Hi, thank you very much. So I think some of the things that, you know, I wanted some to follow back and on with, with your department, is more answers a little bit on why, some analysis on why we have such an increase in the number of out-of-home placements. You know, this is obviously an ongoing analysis. And in particular, I'm also interested in what your plan is for kids who are aging out of foster care. We had a hearing last week on youth homelessness that, you know, is a serious issue. It requires a dialogue with DHS and OSH about analyzing what the plan is for talking with young children as they start to age out of the system. Now clearly, you know, I know that there's been some dialogue about having this discussion with children as young as 14, but, I mean, come on, my 19-year-old can't handle the conversation about where she's going to find a home or anything like that. So I don't actually believe that you can, like, help kids at age 14. I think we actually need a solid plan in place to provide housing for young people so that they're not in these unstable situations. I don't think we can throw them out and tell them, "Go find your own place, we gave you 60 hours of training." And, you know, so, and we had this discussion a little bit last time, and I definitely think it's conversation, but one of the things I think Councilman Dom and I would like to work with DHS on is being much more concrete about what it is to ensure that young people who age out of foster care actually have a home to go to, as opposed to just being trained in it or being counseled about it. 18 is super young, and they're very vulnerable, and what we're seeing is that, as you know, the system is seeing young people already destabilized through foster care or other types of unstable situations, and what we don't want is them to become chronically, you know, unstable through, as they enter into adulthood.
So I absolutely agree that we need to make sure our young people age out safely and that they have a place to live and a plan for independence. And I would just like to say that our work as a child welfare system is really about making sure that we, one, can keep families together, and when young people are in foster care because they can't, or with other relatives, we need to make sure that we safely get them to permanency. And so in terms of our job as a child welfare system, we need to do the work on the front end, so we don't have young people aging out without a plan for permanency. So kids of all ages deserve permanency, so young people, because they're 17 or 18, does not mean that they cannot be adopted by a parent or a relative. And so if our child welfare system is working appropriately, we won't have young people aging out to homelessness or prison or unemployment. So we, as a child welfare system, need to do our job to make sure that young people reach permanency with their own families, of course, or with somebody else's family. And so some of the work that we've tried to encourage young people to be in family settings, we increased, within the past few years, we increased the stipend for foster parents. If they were willing to keep a young person 13 or older, we actually give them an extra $10 a day to encourage, to support that teenager and to create, help create a permanent home. We also are working to make sure our young people get out of group homes and concrete care, so we are actively teaming cases to see if some of those young people can go into family settings. So if we give children families to rely on and lifetime connections, that will reduce some of the bad outcomes that you were just discussing. But that being said, if there are kids who age out and don't have a permanent plan, we need to make sure that we're supporting them and acting, you know, we raise them, you know, as their parents instead of their parents when they're in foster care, and so we need to make sure that we help them create a successful independence.
Right. And just to be a little bit more concrete on that, I'm just suggesting that young people at age 18 don't necessarily have a plan for very much, you know? I mean, they're 18.
I recognize that.
And so this is where the partnership with OSH becomes even more important, that it's not helping young people make a plan, it's recognizing that they're 16, 17, and 18, and we're going to need to provide some level of support as they start to age out of it. And being super concrete about that is what I think we're looking for. So just to reiterate, though, Councilman Dom and myself and Councilwoman Blackwell and others in city council have long worked on this issue about homelessness, but we are particularly focused in on this transition moment for young people, and that is also for other people who are in the audience to understand that this is something that we're taking a serious look at, but want to be in partnership with yourself and with Health and Human Services.
We welcome that.
Yeah.
We welcome that partnership.
So another question has been around, you know, questions about the school district of Philadelphia, and knowing that there's, you know, a dozen or so, 15 or so, social workers in some of the Philadelphia high schools, have you been approached by the district about expanding those services at all?
So I have had a brief discussion with the district about whether or not we could deploy more social workers into the school, and that is something that we are certainly considering, but I need to make sure that the child welfare mandated services are being adequately addressed and monitored. So it is something that I will discuss with my superiors.
And that's something that we are also wanting to have conversations with the school district about, that, you know, we have one in five students who are either in the criminal justice or DHS system, and if there is an opportunity to collaborate with the district on a much more intensive basis, and also review how those 15 caseworkers have worked in the schools.
Certainly.
And then the other question has been around this issue of, about truancy, and in particular, what's happening to young people in our school district who are chronically ill and are coming into contact with the truancy system as a result. So there's an extreme shortage of nurses and counselors in our district schools right now. We're hearing more and more anecdotal's and more indicators from some of the COAs that some of the families who are caught up in the truancy system and in truancy court and are being referred to that are happening in part because of basic lack of care within district schools. And my request is, is that DHS takes a serious look at what's happening with that and is in conversation with our COAs to make sure that they are aware of when a family truly has difficulties within the family, and whether these are being either triggered and/or exacerbated by a school system that has not, that isn't delivering the services that our children both need and deserve. So, you know, we're very concerned also about placement of, you know, my personal feeling has been that placement of children away from their families should be, in part, and I think it's your understanding, danger to that child, physical safety, that that should be the standard. But the placement of children who are truant and chronically truant becomes a question of whether that meets that standard. And it's, you know, again, a question about why we're seeing such high increases in the number of out-ofplacement for our families and young people.
So that is something that we absolutely want to address. It is always our goal to keep kids close to home or in their community, and so we are working with the school district to get a sense of the quality of the education that the young people receive at some of these schools that they're sent to for placement. that the young people receive at some of these schools that they're sent to for placement. And we want to make sure that we work with the school district to develop an array of services that are closer to home and educational opportunities that are closer to home for young people. In fact, I was just having that discussion yesterday with the school district.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Madam Chair, but just again, for clarity, I know that this is a conversation that's been going on for a long time and that there's a real need and urgency from my personal end to concretize what we're talking about, that when we talk about academic outcomes for kids who are placed in placement, we can easily track how many of them are coming back into the school system, how many of them are graduating, whether their academic standards match up with it. They should not be punished for, for the situation of being placed out of home. But clearly, we're seeing really big problems when they come back into our system after being in other places where they're not meeting the standard. And Mid-Atlantic is definitely another place where I think that those, those questions are going to have to be borne out in a real clear fashion and need to talk to you about that more, so, thank you.
I look forward to the discussion.
So, let me underscore the concern around Mid-Atlantic and around the COA that has had to release some of its workers. As we, as you or as we look to what COAs would be awarded next time around.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Point of information?
Person is, is any documentation going to be shared with us as it relates to that?
Not in a testimony.
I just feel like there's some sort of secrecy that we don't say who, what, where.
And so, to DHS?
So, I'm, I'm sorry.
So, in the, in the newspaper reporting, it was not reported, who was the provider and are there any sanctions or any, anything? So, I think it would be important as part of the record to provide that. If we don't want to provide it publicly, I feel like we're going around the circles.
Agreed.
So, I'd like to just get back to you on that, but I'm, I'm happy to discuss it further with you.
For everybody, for the record.
I agree, and it's a really important issue. I just don't want to make a mistake by saying something publicly that I shouldn't, so, I-
So, you can, you can expect that we can handle this one of two ways.
Yep.
We will expect, and I, I see that one of the members of your team is diligently taking notes on where we want follow-up and follow-through.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we would expect that that answer to that question will be in that document and/or we will have hearings.
I completely understand.
Which will allow us to put, again, on the record purely for DHS, about DHS, and what is and what is not happening with our children and the experiment around COAs.
Completely understand.
Okay, then. Councilwoman Parker, good afternoon, welcome.
Let me start with my first question, and it is in regards to the review panel's sort of call for sort of real-time online data regarding our referral for service, our wait times, and some performance appraisals. So, with that being said, if we're trying to make the system really, truly accountable and we want to know what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, what needs improvement, do we have a way that we can detect in real on, online, real-time data, the point of entry, the referral time for service, how long we, we had to wait? Do we have that technical system set up?
I do not have that technical system set up.
If that was one of the, the recommendations from the, from the review panel, is that something in terms of use of, of data to inform our actions, our decision-making, is that something that's on your agenda?
So, absolutely. We, we actually do have the capacity to use data to manage and monitor, but I don't have the ability to tell you how long somebody waits on the, on the phone for service or till services are implemented. There are rules and regulations in terms of how fast we need to get out when a report comes in, and so we do comply with those rules. If there's a 24-hour response time or an immediate response time, we are, we are, we do have rules in place for that, but I don't have immediate online real-time data. I don't have those capabilities.
So, in essence, as it relates to setting up performance appraisals, right, that was also a part of it from a data collection perspective, and, and that too has not been accomplished yet?
So, at various points over the years, we did issue report cards regarding our providers, and that is something that I would like to do if I'm in this seat going forward in FY17, is I would like to be able to pull data and rank the COAs in terms of specific areas. So, for example, when I was talking about how many children move up to placement after receiving in-home services, I want to be able to pull that data system-wide and then by COA, and then share that data with the COAs so that they can learn from each other, as well as share that data with the community, and, and, you know, on our website or, or publish it in other places so that folks can start to see just, I'm using that as an example, but we need to be able to develop a, a scorecard to, to, to rate our providers, and that is absolutely something that the Child Welfare Review Panel brought out in its report in 2007, I believe.
So, let me, again, just echo and just note the importance of having that real-time data.
I agree.
We should be able to, at any time for any provider, go immediately on time, online, and check to see when a child has been admitted into the process, when the process-
We can do that.
When, when, when the process has, has, has gotten, sort of, is, is actually moving, when they were referred for service, as you mentioned earlier, the wait time, now, the wait time, because there is really no way for us to provide the report card, and I'm happy that you described it that way, a scorecard for the providers, because other than that, it appears to be subjective, right? If we don't have sort of a, a rubric, and if it's in real-time and online, we can access it readily. And I do know that that was, the use of data was one of the number-one recommendations from the panel, and I just want to echo the importance of that. And I, and I'll tell you why I want to echo that, and I want you to answer this for me. You know, I was in Harrisburg when all of the Sandusky legislation took place. You know, I'm proud to have authored the legislation that allowed experts to testify in cases of sexual assault in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, although it was a day late and a dollar short, and if it hadn't been implemented prior, those victims would not have been questioned about why it took them so long to actually come forward. But I was reading a story in The Times about this exemplary foster parent who had been, you know, a foster parent, and you read it, you may have read it, 20 years. Over 95 foster children over the years had been sent to this gentleman, and he was like the poster child of what was right. And these boys with emotional challenges had attempted to reach out to counselors, to social workers, to, I mean, to give any inkling that they possibly could that something was abnormal going on, and everywhere these children reported, sort of turned to deaf ear because this person, you know, on paper, had this exemplary record. If there is a foster parent accused, if it's reported, because we know sometimes there are false accusations, accusations if a person is not doing what you want them to do, we know that too, but you have experts to decipher, and, and law enforcement to decipher whether or not, you know, a, a, a report is, is actually, you know, true or not. They go investigate. What do we do here?
So, I can speak to that.
Yes.
I'll, I'll speak to the, your last question first, and then I'll go back to the other question around data. So, in terms of if a report comes in on a foster parent or a kinship parent, we actually immediately remove the children from that particular home while the Department of Human Services does the investigation. The Pennsylvania Department of Human Services, excuse me, does the investigation. We actually work alongside, PA DHS works alongside with the DHS investigator to ensure and to do that investigation and ensure that those young people are safe. We do not return that young person to that particular foster parent or kinship parent unless the report is unfounded or, or not validated. There are also situations in which even if the report is, is not unfounded, meaning there was no basis, however, there are some other concerns with that particular resource parent, sort of foster parent or kinship care parent, we also can make a decision at the Philadelphia Department of Human Services that we will no longer place any additional Philadelphia committed children in that particular foster home if some other issues arise. So, we do that, we flag that in our electronic case management system, as well as we notify PA DHS so they can put it on the foster parent registry. And that's the, the second question. In terms of your first question, I believe we probably misunderstood your question in terms of real-time referrals. So, let me first say that the Department of Human Services has an electronic case management system, and under ILC, this was the first time that the department allowed outside providers, and those outside providers are our community umbrella agencies, to enter data directly into our electronic case management system. So, despite the fact that I might have a COA on Henry Avenue, myself, as well as the Department of Human Services, we can look at the notes, for example, so structured progress notes, the date the referrals that were made. We also can tell the foster parent's name, the, the group home provider that young people are placed in, so we do have that information in our system. What we are unable to tell, for example, if referrals are made for outside child welfare entities, for example, if a mother, for example, needs therapy, and a referral was done to Community Behavioral Health in order to do therapy, we can't monitor that wait time. We would have to call our CBH partners in order to get that information. But in terms of any child welfare program, whether it is being programmed by the community umbrella agencies or one of our subcontractors, we do, we do have that in our electronic case management system.
So, at, so at any time, we're able to do that, if it's a COA and/or if it's internal at DHS?
Yes.
We can get that data on?
Absolutely.
That's good. Councilwoman, there was a delay in, in, in the start of my count because I think some other stuff was going on, so if you'll just allow me the latitude for one other question. This is in regards to the, the case managers for the, the COAs, and, and I want you to just correct me if this data is wrong. The COA budget support one case manager for every 13 families, which in some cases could be almost 30 children, and the national standard is 12 to 15 children or six to seven families per caseworker. Tell me whether or not that data is accurate.
So, that data is accurate. The way we fund our COAs is that there is one case manager for every 13 families, and we believe there's products, you know, there's 2.5 children on average per family, so the COA caseloads could have 20 to 30 children and sometimes more, depending if the family is larger. We need to reduce the caseloads at the COAs. And so, all the work I've been talking about in terms of getting young people to permanency and closing out cases safely is all the work we're trying to do. By accepting fewer cases if we can, by making sure families are safe outside the Child Protective Services System is one way. But then the other way is making sure that we are providing the work to support the families so that they can safely have their cases closed. And so, I, I, you know, by working with the COAs to redesign some of the support positions around case management so that perhaps some of them can have more case managers than the required 1 to 13, and by looking at data to manage cases, we are, and to move children and youth to permanency, we are, we are working very earnestly to drop those caseloads.
So, let me just say to you that I'm happy to hear that you are moving in that direction. And while I believe that it is extremely important to have oversight of the COAs, I love the real-time data, that was one of the recommendations, making data talk and people communicate to each other is challenging, I'm glad that you've tackled that. But what we don't want to do is put the COAs in a position of failing before they've even gotten started as it relates to the process for, for funding. It's almost like what I feel with pre-K and early childhood. You want to provide our children with quality, but you pay people $9 and $10 a hour and then expect to get a good outcome, right? So, we should do everything we possibly can do from that perspective. Thank you, Madam Chair, for your latitude.
Well spoken, well stated. We would now move to Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Councilwoman.
Hello. So, a couple of things that I just wanted to go over, and the first is, I would like to review a situation that happened just yesterday, which I did bring to your attention, but I do want to state it publicly because I like to be on the record about it.
Absolutely.
And so, and last night, probably about 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, I got a phone call from someone in my district, who is a childcare provider, so they have all the proper clearances and so forth. They were concerned because they were at the home of one of their employees who had been accused of child abuse after taking their child to the doctor, and the doctor thought something was inappropriate and reported it. And so, you know, just as a matter of disclosure, I don't know the parent and I don't know the, the child and don't know what, exactly what happened, but what happened thereafter is what is very troubling to me, in that the social worker came, was, you know, saying that, "We have to get a, a family member here or else we're going to take the child away." The, the sister of this individual family member came about two hours later, as well as the childcare provider who was very familiar with the child and could have taken the child according to the parent's wishes, and both were denied, even though they were there on the spot to take the child. The social worker, according to those who were present, seemed to be agitated that it took two hours for someone to arrive on the scene, and despite the fact that there were people there in place who could have taken that child, that the child was familiar with, that they were bypassed even though they were physically there, is very troubling to me. And then, this young child is placed in the home of a stranger overnight, and so we did talk about this, but I have a, a great concern, and, and let me say this also, I do want to acknowledge that you have a very hard-working, dedicated staff. I, I think that, you know, the folks who do this work understand that this is not easy work. This is not something that is, you know, laissez-faire. You know, I have a, a very good friend who worked for one of the COA agencies and who said to me, you know, after she, she left and, you know, she was looking for work again, and we were talking about, well, what, what would she like to do going forward, and I told her about a, a position and opening, and she says, "I never want to go into another home where I have to take a child away from its mother." I just, she said, "I just can't do it anymore." And so, even though we know at, at times this is necessary, but nonetheless, it's, it's heartbreaking work. But for there to be someone on the scene, a professional on the scene, who would make a judgment call to take a child to a complete stranger versus relatives or people that the child is familiar with who have the appropriate clearances, is very, very troubling, and I'd like to hear your answer on the record, and also, how do we prevent this sort of thing from happening in the future where we have, you know, a, you know, a worker who is, you know, making these sorts of determinations? How do we avoid that from happening again? Because again, it's very troubling.
So, thank you for bringing this issue to my attention, and please be assured that I am not happy to hear about this situation. Both federal, state law, and DHS policy require us to look for kin, and kin is loosely defined, it can be biological family, or it could be somebody like a daycare or operator, or a friend, or a colleague, a coach, mentor, to see if that young person can be placed temporarily with, with kin while the investigation goes on or until the reunification can go forward. And that is the policy that we, we promote, and that is the expectation that I have of my staff, that, of course, all kin needs to be assessed appropriately, and that is what our, our staff are supposed to do. So, in terms of what we can do to prevent that, and so first of all, I am working to make sure that we look into this case and that we-
I appreciate it.
-we rectify whatever needs to be rectified. But it's also about making sure people don't make the same mistakes again. And so, what we need to do is we need to reiterate with, with our staff, and it's also about good, proper supervision to make sure, because those, those kinds of decisions need to be discussed and-
Absolutely.
...are required to be discussed with supervisors, and we have a chain of command that is available to do that 24/7. We have folks, I mean, I, I'm on the phone sometimes in the middle of the night with staff. So, we need to make sure that we follow the law and that we follow DHS policy-
Absolutely.
-because as you discussed, as you mentioned, it is extremely traumatizing to be removed from your parent, even if maybe your parent might have done something that they weren't supposed to do.
Absolutely.
And so, we need to, it is our job to minimize trauma for young people.
I mean, I only think of myself as a parent, you know, to my daughter who's six years old, and if someone showed up on an accusation and said, you know- And if someone showed up on an accusation and said, you know, "We're taking your daughter away from you," you know, I cannot even imagine. And the fact that even if I called my sister or someone else who's close to me and was told that they were two hours, I'm irritated, so I'm just going to take this child, you know, I just find that beyond appalling.
It's appalling and unacceptable, and I understand exactly what you're talking about.
Absolutely. And I'd like to know if there can be some sort of response in terms of why this happened from, you know, your professional who was on the scene who made this judgment call? If there's additional information that maybe could clarify, you know, why this happened, I would be most interested.
Understood. We've already started, we called back to the office when we're working on it already.
Thank you very much. Another question is regarding your contact with the Philadelphia School District. I know Councilwoman Gimm mentioned earlier. But as I understand it, community schools would have a component of folks from DHS. Is that accurate? Or are you a part of the community schools model?
So, we are certainly part of the discussion and the planning. We've been involved with the COOs and the community engagement. And I really made an effort to reach out to the Mayor's Office of Education to make sure that they understood the work that we've already begun so that community schools can build on that effort. And I would love for the COOs and other folks that are involved with DHS to participate in making sure that the young people in those schools get the services that they need. I'm not sure that it's been fully fleshed out in terms of what exactly our role would be. But certainly, I think the work we're doing builds on the work that the Mayor's Office of Education is trying to do.
Okay. I think that that's really important information for us to have as a council as we're making the decisions in terms of what's actually going into community schools. It's a very, you know, it's new here for Philadelphia. We're going off of other models. And I know that a DHS sort of organization, agency would typically be involved with a community schools model. But we would really like to have some verification of that and what that looks like for the City of Philadelphia and for the school district. So, I do think that there needs to be more information about that before we can, you know, do what we have to do for the budget.
I completely understand. And we've mentioned in my testimony that we already have social workers in the school doing some of the same kind of work, meaning making referrals for social services to prevention services that we already offer. So, I think there is absolutely room to build on that work and to make it even more large-scale.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Sanchez?
Thank you. I want to have a conversation a little bit around the whole prevention services. And we had this conversation, so, you know, have it on the record. You know, we went kind of from safe and sound to a very, a robust service provider network. One of the things that I asked for the record, and I know you're working on it, is a mapping of all of the subsidized after-school safe haven. There was someone that testified recently during the budget hearings about after-school time. We want to get them, if we can get all of that mapped out, and really want to engage the department in what a prevention strategy looks like. How much is the budget for prevention? Since I know the COO has got some money, it was drawn back, and so now we're rejuggling. What is the prevention dollars?
I believe that the COO budget is about 80 million, I mean, the prevention budget is about 80 million dollars.
It's about 80 million dollars. How much of that is general operating from the city and how much of it is coming from our state kind of match?
So, for every service that DHS purchases, there's a different ratio. And I believe, and Marcia can correct me if I'm wrong, that prevention services, it's 80-20%, 20% the city. Is that correct? 20% for the city.
Okay, so we're matching at 20%.
Yes.
Are we capped at how much we can get from the state as it relates to that, those purchase of services?
The state has to approve our plan, our spending plan. And so, if we want to initiate a new service, we need to explain why we need that new service and the cost of that new service. And sometimes the state will approve or disapprove that service, or maybe approve it for six months of funding instead of 12 months of funding. They tend to approve newer programs for a shorter amount of time. And it's part of the needs-based budget plan that we submit to the state.
So, let me encourage the administration, and I know you're working and putting your hands around it, let me encourage you on the front end to have a conversation, and obviously with our Chair of Health and Human Services as we look at kind of establishing what some of those prevention aspirations are going to be. Because while I do think that the community schools provide some opportunities, I'm a little concerned when I hear the administration say that some of our rec centers are some of the primary providers because of the conditions of some of the sites. And I know that's why the mayor is talking about rebuild. But, you know, the same way we're having the pre-K conversation about quality, I think we need to look at what are quality services for after-school and safe havens. I mean, there's been discussion, and it was part of Councilman Johnson and Jones's conversation about, you know, do we go back to curfew centers? Do we go back to those safe beacons in the neighborhood? And I don't know, because I think we need to look at what worked on some of those and what didn't to figure out a strategy. But I do think in particular, given social media and all the bullying, that high school-age intervention piece, there has to be kind of an articulated strategy that we can all kind of support around so that, you know, whether it's, you know, we have parents doing truancy, I mean, we've tried everything. And then, you know, I've been, I was a nonprofit provider before coming here. I do think we have an opportunity over the next few years to really prioritize some of those. And I just want to caution folks that we just don't keep funding the same things because the world has changed.
I agree 100%. And so, I've asked my staff to take a look at the services that we're buying and to make sure that for FY '17, that each service that we purchase on the prevention side is tied to the work we're trying to do of safely keeping families in their own homes and diverting them, most primarily diverting them from placement. And so, we do need to take a look back at the array of services. You know, we're trying to do this quickly as we anticipate the FY '17, you know, start of the fiscal year, because I don't want to delay services, you know, and I know that time is approaching, and I'm trying to do it as quick as possible.
Yeah, we should definitely establish a work group to look at that.
I would be happy to be a part of it.
So that we can have a conversation. And again, I'll let our Chair of Health and Human Services over here to convene the conversation. But I think there's some great opportunities there, and I think this is the time to have a conversation about it and look at where the need is. Because I think once you do the map and you do the overlay, we want to make sure that the data and the need and where we have the opportunities, that they're matching up. And if they're not, why not?
I agree. And so, we're actually, as part of our analysis, we are doing some mapping. So, we're mapping where our families come from, where other behavioral health services are, where other prevention programs. And that's part of the work why I began those discussions with the Mayor's Office of Education around community schools, is to make sure that as we think about where the community schools should be, that we should also be aware of the other services in the neighborhoods so that we can be strategic. That's exactly right.
And let's be very, and I had mentioned this to you before, and I think it's important as we continue the conversations at COO. Anytime, you know, I know this was part of the public safety discussion before, but anytime we talk about prevention and services to children around police districts, our messaging is way off.
Yes.
It is way off, you know? I was having this conversation with the columnist the other day who was writing about, you know, children and the 1-3 and the 3-2 zip code lifespan. And, you know, I keep saying to folks, particularly those of us who are privileged enough to work with young people, is, you know, what I see is resilient young people. Whether it's the homeless, foster-aged-out young person. And so, as you look at the COO stuff, can we step away from some of those tagging that we do to our children?
I absolutely understand your point. And if we're about the neighborhood delivery of social services, maybe we need to rethink about renaming it by neighborhood. I hear you.
Yeah, a police district is not a neighborhood.
I agree.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sanchez. I just said to Matt up here, I have to monitor my, I'm supposed to be very neutral in the discussion, but all of what Councilwoman Sanchez has pointed to needs to be in capital letters, bold ink, underscored with 15 exclamation points.
Yes, ma'am.
Did I hear that you are pulling together a work group?
On prevention services?
Yes.
Well, we're doing it internally, but I think Councilwoman's suggestion is that we brief the Health and Human Services Committee and work together is an outstanding idea.
Very well. Thank you. Councilman Dom?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I think it's almost good evening, but good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have one last question. This has to do with employee compensation. And I guess in 2015, the employee compensation was about 17,570,000. And then, two years later, or 2017, we're at 23,454, about a 33% increase. And so, my question is, do we have a performance-based system for salaries and raises in the department? Or is that something that we need to institute?
So, the, I have two responses. One, the difference between the 2015 actuals and the FY '16 estimated and the '17 department request is also that the '16 and '17 includes vacancies. So, that number, that budgeted number is including budgeting for vacancies. The '15 number is actual folks that are in their job and getting paid for that.
So, what do you think it'll actually be then for this year?
I don't have an exact figure because I'd have to back out the vacancies. But I believe this '16 and '17 numbers actually reflect the DC 47 increase and the increase for nonrepresented employees.
Okay.
And that was part of the bargaining.
And do we have a performance-based system or not really?
Not for raises, no. We have, we certainly monitor that. We have performance evaluations, but it's not linked to.
Is that something that we could create or is that not possible?
So, that would be something that I would discuss with my superiors in the city administration.
Is that something we can do?
I can certainly explore it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome, Councilman Dom. Do we have a performance-based system for COOs?
We do not have a performance-based contract system for COOs. And that is again, something as we move into FY '17 that is on my agenda, to see if we can build and develop a system for, to incentivize good performance and to just, the opposite.
So, to use President Clark's word, that is stunning, that we would be releasing contracts year after year after year with no means by which to measure what they're doing and how they're doing it.
So, we, so we measure, but we don't not, we do not tie it to compensation. And so, we do need to move to a place where we do that. And that is something that I'm committed to working on, developing a system. We've received assistance from several foundations, and I want to go back to that work to look at that. And if that model's not feasible, then I want to work with my colleagues to develop another model that where we could incentivize. And I actually think the COOs, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think they might welcome it.
Repeat that last statement.
I actually think that the COOs might welcome an incentive base.
Well, whether they welcome it or not, the expectation by taxpayers
I agree.
Is that if you're taking care of our children, then we need to know that you're doing the best job possible to minimize the reports we get in the office and the phone calls we get from parents.
I agree, Councilwoman. And that is something that I plan to work on, to develop a performance-based contract system for the COOs.
By when?
I'm going to, I'm going to work on it during, you know, the next six months or so.
So, we won't be having a conversation about accountability of COOs a year from now during the budget season?
Not with regards to performance-based, but we should be always discussing the accountability of COOs.
Okay. Please? No problem at all. Thank you very, very much. You're welcome. You're welcome. Can I do this without you? Councilwoman Bass?
Thank you. Hello again.
Hi.
So, I just want to follow up on Councilwoman Brown's previous statement that, and the first thing I want to say is I know that you're the acting commissioner. And there was a commissioner before you who put all of this in place. So, I just want to, you know, put that on the record as well. So, it's, so I don't really count this as your baby. But nonetheless, this baby's in trouble. And so...
It's my job to handle now, so I understand that.
And I appreciate you stepping up to the plate and accepting responsibility for it. So, we don't, we don't look at the performance of a COO and make a decision based on that performance in terms of whether we should continue the contract, whether we should renegotiate, whether they're up to the job.
So, I want to be clear, we absolutely do that. So, we absolutely review the performance of the COOs. We absolutely make a decision as to whether or not they are qualified to continue, to continue to perform those services. I was simply saying that the contracts or the manner by which we pay them is not tied to performance outcomes. So, for example, in a performance-based contract, you might be given an incentive bonus if you reach a certain level of permanencies, or if you reunify X percentage of the families under your charge safely.
So, like a bonus system?
So, a bonus, so that maybe you could, might reinvest that money into a prevention program. So, those are some of the kinds of things that I would like to be able, so that, to, so that they could reinvest that money back into the community for other services.
I don't know that when you're dealing with children and placement and those sorts of issues, that a bonus or an incentive-based system is the best way to go. You know, I understand what you're saying in terms of looking at it and to, you want, you want providers to do the very best they can to make sure that every child has a good placement. But if, you know, if you have a provider that doesn't have that as part of its mission, you know, that should be, you know, based on mission and not necessarily incentive. Because I could, I could see some placements happening that could be very much problematic if it's based on money.
Right. And so, and so, it's a balance between the work we're doing and making sure that we have good performance. We did have a very robust performance-based foster care system, which we phased out when we moved into IOC. But that system did get good outcomes, and I think it's worth going back to look at some of the pieces of that system that we used previously to see if there's some way we can build on that. Because this is a, it's more broad scale, but I think there's some, there's some learning that we could do from that.
Okay. Very good, very good. Can you talk a little bit about the shelter system? And I know that in your notes, you mentioned that there had been some improvements since a shelter worker who was killed earlier this year, I believe it was, maybe late last year, but recently. A shelter worker was killed, and that you all have taken additional safety steps to ensure security. Can you talk about what was in place previously and what is in place now? I couldn't from your notes detect what the difference now is since this tragedy has occurred.
Councilwoman, I think that question is more appropriately directed to my colleague, Liz Hirsch, who's the Director of the Office of Supportive Housing. So, the shelters that we used are temporary shelters for young people when they need to come into placement.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. It was just in your notes, so I thought you might want to comment on it.
I don't believe it was in my testimony.
Okay. I'm sorry then.
That's okay.
Wrong person.
No worries. I'm happy not to have to answer a question.
Okay. But all right, all right. Well, moving right along. And the one last question that I have for you is about aging out.
Yes.
Okay. And so, for our young people who are aging out. And, you know, I know Councilwoman Gimm had a number of questions on that. But I just feel that we're, you know, as much as we're trying to solve homelessness, we're also creating homelessness when we don't have these sort of safety nets in place. And I really, you know, I heard your answer. I'd like to hear it again because I'm really just not clear on what we're going to do to address this.
Sure. So, I think the work for us as a child welfare system really begins at the time the case the child comes into care. And we need to be working clearly and focused on reunifying that child with her parents. And for those children that can't go home, we need to make, finding a permanent family or a lifetime connection, somebody that that young person, as they grow older, can go back to when they, when they're in distress, or even in their 20s or in their 30s. Young people will call up their parents or mentors or grandparents and say, "I need some support." And so, we need to make sure that we're helping young people establish either that actual family, biological or adoptive, or a lifetime connection or a mentor. And it's, we need to make sure that we don't see our young people age out without a plan. We have the Achieving Independence Center, which is located in the heart of the Temple Campus in North Philly, where our young people, beginning at age 14, can Campus in North Philly, where our young people, beginning at age 14, can go to, to get, to gain independent living skills, to get homework help, or other kinds of social services. And we begin to work with young people at age 14. We also are very focused on making sure that those young people who we've placed in congreg care, we try to work to make sure those young people get home, because they, our goal is to make sure that the only young people that are in congreg care are those that need it for treatment purposes. And so, we've done a lot of good work in that area. We have more to do. And so, we have expedited permanency meetings for these teenagers who are in congreg care. And if there are some youth who may be going home on the weekends or going to stay with other family members on the weekends, then we need to see, can you, can you actually go home? Can you go, can you go live with your grandmother? Or can you even step down from an institution level to a general level and slowly work these young people back into the community? Because that's the kind of work which will establish or prevent homelessness, is by giving folks families to support them. But however, in instances when that cannot happen, we need to make sure that we build the supports. So, we fund housing programs for our young people and for families that are in crisis. But I'm certainly open to exploring more opportunities in this area with my colleagues in the Health and Human Services Cabinet with Liz Hirsch or Dr. Evans, to see what other opportunities we can, we can have for young people. And I just also want to say this, and not that this is a great option, but the law has changed, so that if a young person leaves us feeling that maybe they're not interested in remaining in DHS care, and they're 19 years old, they can come back to DHS and say, "Actually, I would like to come back into the custody of DHS, and can you help me with a placement?" And so, we do have the ability for young people to do that.
Okay. Well, that's very good to know.
Sure is.
That there is that option that's available. Okay. And I think that's it. No further questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, young people can return up to age what?
21.
21. Okay.
But that doesn't negate the need to find them permanency.
Of course.
But it is a safety net.
Of course. We've heard a lot about the vacancies, and on page 90 of your testimony, you speak to the fact that there are a limited number of bilingual employees in your department that speak languages other than Spanish. So, given everything else that you have to do, how does this impact your ability to help families and children that do not speak English or Spanish as primary languages?
So, I believe there are 81 different languages spoken by employees at DHS. We recognize that this city is a multilanguage city, and we want to make sure that we provide language access to all the families and the children that we serve. So, in those situations where we don't have an employee that speaks a language that one of our clients speaks, we use language access, we use interpreters, we use language line. We translate our documents into several languages. So, we need to make sure that we are communicating effectively and appropriately with the folks that we serve.
Councilwoman Gimm, you want to seize the opportunity as we move to closure with this department?
I'm okay. Thank you.
Okay. Well, let me say, as a former teacher and a former social worker, I know well that the work that the professionals do in your department is not only amazingly important, but emotionally taxing. And I give much credit to professionals who stick with it, because I was one of those who, after working seven months at Slaton Farm School, which was an all-girls school where young people had been adjudicated there by the courts, emotionally, I simply couldn't take it anymore, because of the complicated, complex, awful circumstances that girls had to endure. So, when you, when we have professionals that are able to grow a career and stay in the work that you do, it should always, always not go unrecognized.
I agree. And I'd like to just take this opportunity to thank my staff for the hard work that they do on behalf of the children and families. And it is hard work, and they are dedicated professionals, and I thank them.
It truly is. So, a number of questions have been raised. A lot of work, information needs to come back to us, and we would ask that you do that post-haste.
I will.
As President Clark will determine when the callbacks will be.
Thank you very much for having me. I appreciate it.
We thank you all. Thank you very much.